To order for April 1st, 2024. The first is the roll call. Could you please take the roll?
Bowson.
Here.
Simonson. Coleman. Westergaard. Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Next thing on the agenda is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Is there a second?
Six yes.
Motion passes. Number three is on receipt of oral or written testimony from any resident or property owner of Des Moines on the proposed property tax levy for fiscal year 2025, Council Communication, number 24-127. Is there one? I'll turn this over to the manager if there's any comments you'd like to make on this since this is a new process.
Mayor, I appreciate introducing this item. This is a new process for the budgets across the state of Iowa for local governments. This is a single agenda item for which residents are able to come and speak about the budget. We had a all-day budget session on February 22nd that was recorded, so that information is out there available to the public. There is an incredible amount of information about our budgets on our website as well. So, yes, I'll turn back over the mayor through our speakers. We can, we'll try and answer what questions we can this morning.
Anybody have a comment?
Yes, come up and state your name and address or ward.
Morning. My name is Jeff Blonigan, 6705 Three Lakes Parkway, Des Moines, Iowa, 50320. In the rush to get here this morning, I forgot my glasses. But I have all my information, so I will try to give it my best shot. So, I'm here to comment on, between the schools and the city and the county, property tax proposal, which is this form right here. I've done the math, pretty simple math, and we're looking at between the three entities, we're looking at a $30 million, $30 million, 902,688 increase from last year, or from the last, the last amount, amounts. And I recently read where only 60% of the properties in the city of Des Moines pay property taxes. And that means out of 89, I believe it was 89,000, 88,894 properties, there's only 60%, 60% of those paying property taxes, which is a pretty heavy burden on those 60%. And I'd kind of like to know why the 40% aren't. Why aren't we spreading this out and making this more doable, for lack of a better term? So, being on a fixed income, retired, this, this property tax increase, I've been here in Des Moines four years, and I've seen these property taxes up and up and up and up. And just when I got here in 2019, I came from California. I'm originally from Minnesota. And I've never seen property taxes so high, not even in California. But since 2019, they've, they've increased, and I'm going, wait a second, if, if people are retired here, they're going to get taxed out of their properties. I also brought a mortgage statement that shows that the biggest, the lion's share of my mortgage statement is property taxes. So, I just want to, I just want to make a comment that we've got to do something. I don't know how we can make this more fair. I don't know if people in apartments are paying, you know, because there's a lot of apartments. But anyhow, thank you for your time.
Maybe the manager can address some of those.
Was it Jeff, I believe? Thank you for coming in this morning. All great questions. I would ask that maybe if you wanted to, you could leave your contact information because I have a feeling that this, my answers may only generate more questions for you. I'm going to start from the top. The increases that you're seeing on the taxes for next year are, well, the city of Des Moines is one of eight to as many as possibly 12 different governments that have an opportunity to tax our property through property taxes. So, we are just one of several. However, we are the largest at the moment, so, from a property tax in Des Moines. So, I want to make sure I answer as many of these as possible. The increase that is occurring at the city of Des Moines historically is around 3.5% increases year to year. And the, the way you get to that number is twofold, the changes in value and the tax rate. The tax rate has been the same for now, I think, six or seven years since the sales tax was put in place. We lowered it immediately with the sales tax and have not raised it since that point. That's the tax rate piece. So, what has been changing over time is the valuations. And unfortunately, that's where it starts to get complex because everybody has two values. You have your market value that the county sets, that's called the assessed value, and it really should be as close as possible to what you could sell your home for. And then there is a lower, usually about half of the amount of your assessed value that is considered the taxable valuation. That's the value that actually applies against our tax rate and the other taxing authorities, the school, the county, the DMAC, the community college, and again, there's again eight to 10 of those. So, there's a lot of different value variables in why taxes go up and down, but the main one is your value and the fact that there are so many other entities that have a chance to set their rate at, at different levels. So, we have all the history we could share with you and what we're doing in Des Moines to keep the tax rate the same or trying to lower it, but we've, we've had struggles over the last several years with changes. And that's the other set of questions you had. You know, what are the rules for, for generating property tax? And it starts with not all properties have to even pay property taxes. And you are correct that about 60% of our property parcels do pay taxes, or close to 40% do not. And that is state law that determines the ability for a entity that owns property to be considered tax-exempt from property taxes. And as you might imagine, Des Moines is the capital and the largest city, attracts nonprofits to be here to provide the services that they do to the community. And so, we have a lion's share, if you will, of all tax-exempt entities in the city of Des Moines, by far the highest percentage of, of tax-exempt property. One of those tax exemptions is the state government itself does not pay any local property taxes. So, all the state property around the city of Des Moines is tax-free from a property tax standpoint. Of course, the public schools don't pay property taxes to us as well. I think apartments is a whole nother issue. They have lowered, the state has decided to lower the, the tax burden on apartments considerably by about 50%. And so, what used to be a very large revenue source for apartments paying property tax has been about halved. It's about half what it used to be as they changed to residential rollback.
That's, the state did that change.
The state made that change as well. So, our, our hands are tied on that policy of who gets to be tax-exempt and who doesn't. And we, we have tried vigorously to work with the, with the state to loosen up those rules to, to benefit, you know, help benefit our taxpayers. But admittedly, it's, there's been very little progress to, to assist at the state level. So, I would, I would offer up if you, if you want more information, I'm going to point out Nick at the back of the room, if you would, with the beard. Nick is our finance director, and he'll be up presenting in a few minutes here later. But the finance department is available to further the conversation. We, we really want our residents to know more about how the system works and to share that with your neighbors as well. And every year, we, we set our budget, and that's coming up on April 15th. But this morning is the very, the first process with the public to talk through. So, again, thank you for, for coming out. Turn it back over to the mayor.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? If so, please come to the front and state your name, address, or ward.
Good morning. I'm Mark White. I live down on the southeast side, down Joe's area. And you were talking about the revenue side. I'd like to talk about controlling costs and what you've been doing to, to control costs. First of all, I really like this form. I know Angela Conley said she thinks it wastes money. I don't know if it wasn't for this form, I wouldn't be here this morning. So, I've got two of us down here at least, so I think this is, this is worthwhile. Under the city of Des Moines, you talked about increased staffing as being one reason for the increase in, in property taxes or in your need for revenue. I'd like to know where those positions are, why they were needed in the process that you go through to justify those. Hopefully, that's not, not too easy. Also, healthcare, presumably, you're talking about health insurance there. The, everybody's medical costs are going up, of course. The medical rate of inflation is much higher than, than the inflation of even food right now. I think grocery store, you're talking about 17% over the last few years. And I'm, I'm not even sure what the medical costs are. Also, is the city council involved with the city health insurance? I've heard for years that the city health insurance is, is real, real, real plush insurance that the, the city employees get some things that a lot of people haven't gotten for years with their health insurance. And I'd like to know if that's true and, and is, does the city council, do the city council members participate in that health insurance plan? And just curious about that. Retirement costs, oh, what, and what's been, what's been done to, to keep the cost of the insurance down? What has management done to, to try and keep that cost down? Retirement costs evidently are up also. Why is that? What's been done to try and control the costs of the city employees who retire or the ones who are retired? So, I'm interested in the cost side of things rather than the revenue side. I guess that's about all I've got. I understand how the tax rates work and how, how the mileage rate is set and property tax values go up. You can say, well, we didn't raise your taxes, but in effect, it costs us more. So, that's a tax raise as far as I'm concerned. But I do appreciate this form, and, and those are all my questions.
Mr. White, thank you again, and.
Oh, did I give my address?
No, you don't.
No, you said southeast side.
Southeast side.
That's all I need.
We got you.
So, similar, Mr. White, I think a couple of the answers may spur more questions, so you're, you're free to speak with our finance department or the city manager's office for that matter. I can make myself available. I'm going to try and answer your four questions here. The positions that are being added in this current budget are two police officers that are needed with quite a bit of loitering and issues that we're, that we're having across the city, but mostly downtown area. And so, we've recognized we need a dedicated force to address the public safety issues involved there. We have a firefighter position that's being added that will act proactively. It'll be a paramedic because all our firefighters have those skills as well. They will proactively contact our heavy, what we consider heavy users, repeat users of the ambulance system for, for needs that can be handled in much, much more efficient ways by making sure they have their medical appointments set up in advance and that they have other transportation opportunities instead of calling an ambulance, which takes a full ambulance crew to come to their homes, and it, through a 911 call. So, we've, we've tested that out and shown that it can be incredibly cost savings to the city by handling that with one staff person as opposed to the three that might respond to the ambulance calls. Let's see, we also have IT position and a equity position that are internal. Those positions work for the other departments like public safety so that they don't have to have firefighters or police officers acting as IT. Obviously, those are non-sworn professional positions, but they spend their time working with, for those other departments to keep their operations, their software up and going. The healthcare is a challenge for all employers. You're right. The cost of inflation for healthcare is rocketing higher than, than even the food, like you mentioned. What we do is, as a public entity, is we have a, a public union, several actually. And in those conversations, we are able to negotiate having the employees pay more of the burden of healthcare every cycle. The non-union as well, that's something that's set by staff, by myself and, and HR department. And so, we have, for many years, 15 years now at least, increased the cost burden on the employees to have it, to get to a closer fair share. They are now between 15 and 20% of the cost of healthcare paid by, by our employees, depending on which union you're talking about. Again, all this information is available to the public, and we can get to you. We have programs in place to temper the increases, the cost of, of healthcare, things like wellness programs. We have incentives where employees, as long as they're participating in their own wellness programs, are able to reduce their contribution to their healthcare. So, as long as they're reducing the cost, they don't have to pay in as much. So, it's a great incentive that we find does lower the cost of healthcare for everyone, the taxpayers and the individuals. The council are able to, if they choose, to, to be on the healthcare plan that the city has. I am going to need to, to get the full details of the healthcare plan with your question about whether or not we have a rich program. I can tell you that from a tax standpoint, we are not a Cadillac program that at the federal level kicks in all kinds of additional taxes and, and requirements on the employer. And I don't know offhand what that, what, I know years ago when they created those, it was like a $20,000 a year health plan required all those. And we are not in that category of, of healthcare plans. But to be fair to you, I think you would need to see all of the, of the healthcare plan arrangements to, to make your own decision if you think it's too rich or not. Then lastly, retirement, our retirees by state law have to be, we have to make our health insurance available to them, but they have to pay the full cost of the healthcare when they retire. And so, they have that choice. And there's even a 2% administrative cost on top of the cost of the healthcare itself, so we make sure that, that other employees and the taxpayers are not paying for the cost of healthcare for our retirees. But I think that answers all your questions. But again, I'd encourage you to stay in, in touch with our, either city manager's office or finance. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Come forward, state your name and address, or I know you've not a ward, but.
Art Whitmack, president of the Taxpayers Association of Central Iowa, 14265. And I, Madam Mayor, do live in Clive.
I know, that's.
So, I, I apologize for that. Haven't been a longtime taxpayer in Des Moines. In fact, our family came here in 1856, so it was a hard, it was a hard move to make. Since this form came out, the phone has just lit up, as I'm sure all of yours have as well.
Yes, those are ours.
And unfortunately, many people are not as thoughtful as the two individuals who spoke today. They haven't taken the time. In actuality, to, to many, this is a very complex form, and it really doesn't speak to the issue that the Senate, the House, and the governor were concerned about a year ago. And understand, this bill was signed into law one year ago. It was passed by all but one person in the Iowa Legislature. All Republicans, all Democrats, with the exception of one, voted in favor of it. Think of that happening today, regardless of what the issue is. But I do think it, it brings to the forefront the fact that the legislature is hearing from people from DeCorah to Des Moines to wherever it happens to be about the significant increase that property taxes are having on our standard of living. They are going up in many areas faster than the, the cost of living, even when you start to factor in population. Our association was started in 1921. We continue to be nonpartisan. We understand that public services are necessary for the quality of life we all want, but the ability to fund those public services are not unlimited. Somehow, we have to find that balance. And I think what the legislature was trying to do was to get this dialogue started now before August and September, when the property tax bills hit and you all get the calls, how in the world did this happen? And frequently, what is not widely understood is some of the capital improvements that are included in those bills, the discussion started five years ago. And what we are encouraging our members to do, and we're starting, I filled out one of these little forms we do for our members, about 150 since this came out, because the information on here is misleading. On the back of it, it gives an example of $100,000 property. And if I look at Des Moines, using the current tax rate, it says 908. Using the proposed tax rate, 770, a decrease of 15.2%. And that, that for the reasons we were discussing with the increase in property tax, I mean, pardon me, with the assessment, even with the, the drawdown, the rollback, it, it still is significant. So, I did a, a calculation for one of the people in Des Moines that was anticipating a reduction of 15.2%. And I took their property, and it is, the decrease that they're going to get is 3.88%. And they said, you mean, I'm not going to get a decrease of 15%? Those are, that's the kind of misinformation, I think, Madam Mayor, that you were speaking to. This has caused a lot of consternation. Clive, on their property tax statement, Dallas County, I'm sorry, represents that it's going to be a 2.4% increase. And when you take it to a specific property in Dallas County, it's 14.18% increase. That's why the information here that the legislature, in a bipartisan way, was trying to make available, got more complex. So, our association with a number of others, public and private, trying to go back and say, okay, first time, let's not be married to this, let's improve it. There is a marvelous website that will take the county assessor's information to a specific package. It is in some of our material, which I'll make avail, thank you, make available. And I appreciate your time and efforts.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, based on the 40%, is there any other community in this metro area or in the state that has a 40% where you can't?
When I did that research about five years ago, there, there wasn't anybody even close to that amount. Understand, churches are a big part of that as well, and we have a lot of the larger churches.
So, is, just wanted.
Maybe, maybe to his comments, you can, you can talk a little bit about how where our increase is 4% growth, is that what it was? And with the new legislative changes, that actually drops it below the 3%, which.
Yeah.
Our fire department, our police department, you know.
Yeah.
It's, it's tough to pay, pay the bills when you have a 2% growth.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
I, I think that, since he stated that, you know, we're not the suburbs that are getting 15% growth where it goes down to 13%.
Yeah. I'll, I'll try my best to simplify some of this as well, but thank you for, for the questions, Mr. Whitmack. You've been a great partner over the years and, and being a lens for the general public to whether or not they understand these tax complexities. I would ask that any conversations with the state about property tax that, to make sure that you have experts with you, I would consider yourself one of those individuals. But it would be incredibly valuable, and I would think deserving of our state of Iowa, to have experts in those conversations because you talked about, in, in all due respect, sir, the bipartisanship of that bill that was passed, and yet, there was 24-hour notice of what was even in the bill to begin with, with no prior conversations with true experts in developing that bill. And that's been played out with how, how badly the, the form came out in its first form. It needs to be improved greatly. Understand that we all want lower taxes, right? I agree with that. I want to pay lower taxes myself. And so, it is a conversation about the expenses and the revenues and what are we controlling? What are we doing that we need to change? That's a conversation that takes place with every, with every budget cycle. The, we're going to have this conversation more extensively here in about 30 minutes on, in our workshop about this form and it coming out. I would just tell people that, in a little bit of a simplified way, whatever happened with your percent increase of the value of your home, the market value that the county would have sent to you and said, this is your new value for your home, whatever percent that increased, because of the state rules and the rollback, you can reduce that percentage by about 16%. And so, on average, in Des Moines, our residents saw a 19% increase to the market value of their homes. This is residential, commercial's different. So, on the homes, they saw on average a 19%. And so, you're able to subtract 16% of that. That does leave about a 3% increase to the taxable value. That second value that I mentioned earlier is your taxable value. On average, Des Moines residents would have seen about a 3% increase to their taxable values. We kept at the city.
We kept at the city our tax rate the same. Therefore, you will see a 3% increase when you take that same rate times a 3% increased value. Our residents should see, as homeowners, about a 3% increase to their tax bill. Now, again, there's other taxing authorities that we'd have to look at their bill to understand what the schools, we have eight different school districts that are in the city limits of Des Moines. So there'd be eight different tax rates we'd have to look at, depending on what school district you're in. But I'd really want to try to simplify this for our residents that I would encourage you to actually call our finance department, because they'll help you through this, if you see your residential property tax increase by more than 3%. Because we do respect that greatly, that we need to keep that under control. Specific to this budget, we had a 4% increase in totality. All classes of property, total taxable value for the city of Des Moines, when you take TIF out of it, was a, was a 4% increase. By the new law that was passed, we had to take 2% haircut off of that. And so they said, for your general operations, you can tax only 2% more than what you did the previous year. And we all know how historically high inflation has been for, for all costs. It's been, it's been significantly higher than 2%. And so we have had to use more of our sales tax in this budget for operations than we normally have. We've had to make a lot of adjustments to, to get to where we can say, we're not going to raise the tax rate, we're going to keep it the same and do a lot of smart changes. But those changes will not be available to us year after year. So we're more concerned about what the budgets will look like two, three years down the road. And we're having that exercise on almost a daily basis, looking for those savings. So again, Des Moines had a 4% increase, they got a haircut to 2%. All of the math and calculations means our average resident should be seeing a 3% increase that is pertaining to the city. And I can't speak to the others without looking into it. So hopefully that helps. Is that kind of what you wanted to hear?
Complicated.
It is.
But appreciate this opportunity to explain it more. And with that, I guess we have to take a vote on, or just close, close the hearing. Okay, so just the motion to adjourn? If there's no one else, when it's.
I'll move item three to receive and file everyone's comments and to approve item three.
Is there a second? Please vote.
Do you want?
Yeah.
Can you guys move?
Sure, we'll vote. That's okay. It's early.
Six, yes.
Motion carries.
Mike can help you.
I will introduce my.
You got somebody over there.
Okay, the next is the motion to adjourn.
Move approval.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now adjourned from our special hearing. So thank you for coming down. Okay. Now, I was remiss in introducing our, we have almost a full panel, but Carl Voss is out of town on his way back. Councilman Mike Simonson, who is elected, he is officially signed in. That's why he's, he'll be officially sworn in, but he's officially on the council. So welcome to our council and we appreciate you. So first thing is taxes. Yes. So now we'll go into the work session. And the first, I guess, is Invest DSM is the first thing on the agenda.
Good morning, everyone. An Appretenment House Senior Planner with Development Services. The first item on the agenda is talking about neighborhood revitalization, along with the update that Invest DSM has been working on and some of the next steps. This is going to be a joint presentation between me and Amber Lynch from Invest DSM. And I'm going to kick this off with a brief discussion on, with a brief discussion on what we've been doing at the city, sort of a bit of a status update from a report that we had conducted, a study that we had conducted last year, going through some of those findings and recommendations that have come out of that study. And then I'll pass it on to Amber to talk about the annual update from Invest DSM and the next steps that we have in this strategy. What's the best way for me to? Sorry, this is my first council presentation, so bear with me. Give me a second.
There's lots of firsts today.
So just, just go down, or maybe this is better. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. I want to start off with this visual, this graphic that was put together last year. And you might be familiar with it. You might have seen it from one of the presentations that Chris Johansson had made back in December, when he talked about the citywide block challenge grant update. So this is a sort of a full list of the existing tools and programs we have in the Neighborhood Revitalization Toolkit with the city. It's almost all of the tools in there. And they are broken down, and they have been added into six different bubbles that correspond, each bubble corresponds to the neighborhood typology 1 through 6. And if, as some of you might remember, and maybe a quick update on what that neighborhood typology is based off of, it's based off of the property conditions on the ground. This was first conducted in 2018 and has been updated in 2023. When it was first done in 2018, each of those typology that came out of it, which indicates the health of the neighborhood conditions and the market conditions, also sort of matched with the other metrics that were looked at in the ground, whether it was sales prices or assessed values and overall market, other, some of the other market indicators. So this gives you a good sense of the overall health of the neighborhood and the city in general. The one and two correspond to the strongest sub-areas in the city. The five and six are our softest or weakest areas, while three and four are sort of in the middle. And most of the city sits solidly in that three category. Each bubble then lists out the tools and programs that we have in offer that are best suited to the opportunities that are presented on the ground in those sub-areas. So for example, if you go to the top left, which is number one, and is our strongest area of demand, you have things like inclusionary affordable housing or tax abatement for missing middle. Those two strategies, along with the other things, are recommended for increasing the, for increasing the housing types that we have in the city, as well as building in more of that affordable housing in areas of strongest demand in the community. You go down to three, for example, you will see Invest DSM slash Special Investment Districts, which we will be talking about more later today. But that focuses on the middle neighborhoods approach that the city adopted again back in 2018, based on our study, and which focuses on maintaining and increasing that market strength in three for areas that are much recoverable and, but also maybe have the risk of sliding down if they're not really looked at. So you have that. But at the same time, while you have the Special Investment Districts, you also have a lot of other programs within that three that look at the three neighborhoods across the city, whether it's the citywide block challenge grant, or there are citywide, city-assisted home repair programs that include your blighted property rehab program. It includes and has things like the tax sale, that's one of our acquisition tools. So it increases some of those tools we have to work across the city and not just focus on the Special Investment Districts. As you go down into the five, then you have five and six, then starts looking at tools and listing tools that are focused more on the stabilization work that is needed on the ground. So that might include your nuisance abatement and blitz on blight techniques, your demolition tools that we had some of those in place since 2018. And then those have been augmented more recently with the improving our neighborhoods program that offers a lot of assistance with home improvements again and home stabilization for those areas. So the idea is to build that sort of floor for properties in those areas, stabilize them so that they are then sort of teeing up for when they get ready for those revitalization activities as they move up into that typology. So I want you to keep this visual. We've put this together, and the PIO was really good about getting our different ideas that the different stakeholders and departments in the city work on. They were very good about pulling this together in a one pager. This comes with an appendix on the backside, and I can have that hand out to you, sent out, which includes the definition of each of those programs and tools. I would ask you to keep this in mind as you are thinking through and having conversations related to revitalization going forward. Every time you're thinking of maybe a specific strategy in the neighborhood in a small scale or the city overall, and use this as a sort of guiding sort of document going forward. With that, I'm going to move to the findings from, findings and recommendations from the status report that was completed for neighborhood revitalization efforts last year. The city contracted with CCB LLC back in 20, December of 2022, to take a look at what we had been doing, what we had been working on, if there were changes in the market conditions across the city, and look at some of the early work that's been done by Invest DSM, and if there were any recommendations that were appropriate that were coming out of it. So the first one here is, Des Moines did see improvement after 2018, but remained in a similar position relative to its regional regions, regional neighbors. One of the key findings from 2018 study was some of the weaknesses that Des Moines had when it was compared to its surrounding jurisdictions. Since 2017 and between 2017, 18 and 2022, there's been a lot of positive improvement overall. And you can see those changes in whether it's a growth in the total number of households, total population, average sales prices, the median household income. Those, all of those have seen a positive change. There are also changes and improvements in metrics like adults that hold a four-year college degree, which indicates, again, the strength in the market. While there have been all of these positive changes in the last four or five years, the relative hierarchy of how the city sits with its surrounding neighborhood, surrounding jurisdictions remains the same. Because as the city was improving in some of these metrics, the surrounding jurisdictions were also moving. So where it sits with, in terms of its suburban communities, it's still sort of the same. When you look at the city locally, there have been, again, improvements in the last, since 2018. Some of those changes you could see in, there's been an improvement in average sales prices. There's been an improvement in overall single-family increases here. But again, when you see those changes across the neighborhoods within the city, the hierarchy of, or the rank order of the neighborhoods, or where it sits in that spectrum of 1 through 6 remains the same. You do see more improvements in the softer neighborhoods, if you see some of those charts. You see more improvements in the softer areas. But those were starting from a really low base to begin with in 2018. So when you convert that into a percentage indicator or a percentage unit, that seems to be really large. But that might not necessarily mean that that softer neighborhood likes really improving and strengthening. So there have been improvements across the board, but the relative hierarchy of the neighborhoods and how they sit in that typology remains the same. You also see those improvements in the property conditions that you see in those two maps out there. One of the key things that you would see, you would notice is that the dark blue no longer exists in the 2023, which I think is a testament to some of the work that's been done overall, not just through Special Investment Districts, but some of the other efforts that are being done in the city. So that property conditions have definitely improved within those areas. And as we go down and as Amber talks about some of the Invest DSM stuff, you would also notice that the, there have been visible improvements in areas that were, or in properties that were, say, scored three or four, and they have moved distinctly to two, especially in the Special Investment Districts.
Yeah. Clarification. You said these charts are improvement in property conditions, but it looks like it's demand, right? Which may or may not be linked to property conditions themselves.
The property conditions is the maps on the, the property condition is shown through the neighborhood typology that you see in the two maps. So the extreme left one is from 2018, and the one in the middle of the map is from 2023 conditions.
Right, well, I guess it says the score is demand. Maybe not. Am I, am I missing that? I mean, demand and property condition are not necessarily the same thing, right?
I think the demand, I think, is talking about the market demand in those neighborhoods.
And that, that's what this chart is, because I think if you go back to the chart that you showed us earlier, it's a little bit different on the conditions. I just want to make sure, and maybe I'm reading that wrong.
Is this the one that you're thinking of?
No. I think the key here is the, the measurement that's being used in these is the condition, which drives, which drives the demand.
That is it.
Okay.
So there's not a separate measurement for demand.
No.
It is the condition that relates to the demand.
I mean, I look up here at the 2018 on the upper right-hand side, that's Ward 2. Those are like estate homes, the big properties. And it was a number three in 2018. Now it's a number one. And I don't know of anything that's changed there. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't.
Sure.
I'm very familiar with that area. There's nothing that's changed.
I think the key here is to remember, each, each district is looking at the percentage that are in the different conditions. And so if you have a low population area like the one you've mentioned, it would only take a couple brand-new homes to bring the average up to the pink, to the higher ranking.
I don't think we have any new homes there. Not a one.
In the last five years?
No.
I think, well.
I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Tell me how it got to that.
I don't know, that's the Hubble Homes maybe on there.
No, that would be Hubble. We're looking north of Broadway there. Hubble Homes are south of Broadway.
Okay, so they would have been the triangle that's below that. Well, anyway, we can get into the exact numbers for you.
We can get into those exact numbers.
I would like to see that, just help me better understand it, because I don't see any, I mean.
Is it one, is that one, that's one section, both above and below Hubble? That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
But a lot of the stuff was light gray to darker.
Yeah, wouldn't.
I can look into those and I can find out why.
Yeah, because they put a bunch of those, you know, if it is those homes off East, about East 46, there would be enough to probably flip it, because there's no other homes.
Well, but.
Wouldn't that make it better though?
Yeah, well, that's, pink is.
Like right here. It went from light gray.
So any one of these districts we can dive into would.
Okay, I would die, I'd like to see that.
Sure, sure, I can, I can look at those in detail.
Because that should be an easy one, because I'm familiar with every property right there.
Okay, all right, I can bring those into it.
Unless you say, you know, they don't have water services. Many of them still have wells up there, but that's another issue.
Okay. We can find those. I can get that information out to you.
Okay.
Again, like Scott said, I think the, the main takeaway from this is that the relative hierarchy across the neighborhoods remains the same. So locally, even though there have been positive improvements overall within property conditions or some of those assessed values, where a certain neighborhood sat in that block of 1 through 6 has not changed a whole lot. So that, which would then tell us the strategies that we are following sort of still meet where we had started out with in 2018. This one is my favorite, clearly. The city has grown its toolkit since 2017, and it continues to do so. As I mentioned when I first started out, the city's added. As I mentioned when I first started out, the city's added, in 2017 and 18, we did have tools that address nuisance, addressing nuisance, abating nuisance properties, demolition tools. But since 2017, we have added in a lot more tools, whether it's the improving our neighborhoods program. We have scaled up some of our tax, tax sale acquisition tools. We have, we've improved a little bit more and there's been more work done through, say, Blighted Property Rehab Program as well as the Citywide Block Challenge Grant. And there are several other tools that have been come, that have come in and the city's partnering, partnering with a lot of our nonprofit stakeholders. Ion especially, when you look at Ion, has been very instrumental in creating those partnerships with our nonprofit partners in where they might be able to leverage and where they might be able to really increase their impact on the ground. So these are some of the images that are of properties that the city has touched in through some of that toolkit. The fourth finding, which goes directly with what Invest DSM has been doing, it's relatively new. Invest DSM has not been around for a very long time, but despite that, all of the, it's too early to judge it, but all of the early results show that it is meeting the intent and the goals that it had started out with and is, is meeting its mission. And I'm sure this is, you can see it anecdotally around, but there's a lot of respect and visibility for what, what work it's doing in the neighborhoods. There's been a lot of property condition improvement for sure. Again, as I was mentioning, there's been a shift specifically, if you look at, say, the three and four score properties and special investment districts, there's been a large shift from that to a property score of two. So there's a visible improvement in the way those special investment districts look. There have been improvements in the average sale prices and SS prices and my charts are a little bit old, but Amber would get into some of those details and talk about even more improvements that they've seen in the last couple of years. It's a bit of mislabeling here. Those were the four findings from our study. I'm going to jump to the fifth recommendation that's come out of it. So this reads findings, but it's actually recommendation. The first four, the first four recommendations that come out of the study talk directly about some of the work that Invest DSM is doing and how it impacts some of that strategy. The fifth recommendation deals directly with what the city has been doing. So when we first started out in 2018, the CZB study from 2018 had suggested not just the middle neighborhoods approach, though that, that was the focus of it, but they had recommended like a broad strategy of what should be done in our strongest areas as well as our softest, weakest areas. And this chart sort of gives you an idea of where some of those newer programs that we have been, this is not a comprehensive snapshot, but it gives you a picture of where some of those other efforts that the city's taken up either through the Ion program or nuisance abatement in the city. And those kind of track fairly closely with what the implementation steps had been suggested back in 2018. So the, this recommendation basically asks the city to continue doing some of that work, continue improving on what we might be able to do in our strongest and weakest areas, whether it's leveraging that inclusionary affordable housing strategies in the strongest ones or honing in on some of those tools we have for revitalization, for stabilization in a five and six and have them tee up for three. So with that, I am going to pass this on to Amber to talk more about the other four recommendations that have come out of the study along with the other Invest DSM work that she's been doing.
Thanks, Anu, and good morning, everyone. Amber Lynch, I'm the Executive Director at Invest DSM. So I'm going to go back into the findings and recommendations related to Invest DSM, but before I do, I just wanted to take a moment and pause and introduce our organization for those members of the public who are not familiar with us. So out of the, the work that was done on the part of the city of Des Moines in 2018 to revamp the neighborhood revitalization strategy, one of the things that we did at the time was form a new nonprofit organization and that is Invest DSM. So we were created in the summer of 2019 by a resolution of the city of Des Moines and Polk County as an independent nonprofit to focus on these middle market neighborhoods and to really put implementation strategies on the ground, to adopt specific places and put out various financial tools to assist property owners in improving both homes and commercial properties, to market and promote these areas as great places to live and work and, and own a business and to grow the leadership capacity within those places so that we can continue to have them as desirable points in our, in our city. One of the things that CZB noted in this status report was that we were really created as a confidence building mechanism. So on the part of our property owners who perhaps had dollars sitting on the sidelines, we are now pulling those dollars and encouraging people, inspiring people to invest them in upgrading and updating their properties so that we can protect our older buildings. These are the first four areas that we started working in. We were formed as an organization in 2019 while these four areas were going through a planning phase and we opened our first grant programs in the spring of 2020. And I think one of the things that's interesting to note about these four different areas is while they are all in the, the middle of that neighborhood typology that Anu was talking about, they're each very different from one another and they each had very different starting points as well. And so what that has given us an opportunity to do over the past couple of years is really test different tools, take our grant programs, tailor them to the characteristics of each place and figure out what works and what doesn't. And so this status report does speak to some of those things that we're finding as, as we get going here. We are seeing that things are playing out as expected, so that's, that's a good thing to note. Okay, so back to that status report and some of the findings and recommendations specifically related to Invest DSM. So I think the second note there is really the recommendation, which is to stay the course in Columbus Park and Oak Park Highland Park, but pivot our strategies as needed. So these two were softer areas of the four that we took on. They were less healthy than the other two when we started, more properties in poor condition, lower sale prices, lower values, things like that, lower capacities. And so some of the work that we're doing in those areas just has a really long lead time. In Columbus Park, for example, there were a lot of vacant lots that were already present in the neighborhood when we started our work and it takes time to acquire those and then to get new homes built on them. We have a target in the neighborhood plan of having about 60 new homes built over a 10-year time period and we just saw the first five of those come to market within this last year. In Oak Park Highland Park, a lot of the momentum has been around the business district at Sixth and Euclid Avenues and we've had a lot of great success in that area, both with anchor businesses like Chuck's and Highland Bakery refreshing their buildings and storefronts and then also with new businesses, Slowdown Art Terrarium, the collective moving into that area and it really becoming this place that small business owners want to be in. On the housing side, things are progressing more slowly in the residential area of Oak Park Highland Park. Part of that is, you know, at this point in time, we were only three years in, we're still building relationships in those areas, we're still earning the trust of residents so that they understand what we have to offer them. So really the, the recommendation here was to, to keep going the way that we're going. We're making progress. It's going to take a little bit longer perhaps than in Drake and Franklin, which you'll see that in a minute, but we need to keep going along that path.
Can I just mention, I was up at Highland Park Saturday, so busy. It was really busy and the amount of people coming in from all over the city was really encouraging and the new businesses opening up, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of exciting to see.
It is. There is definitely a tangible change in the area. You can feel it. Okay, so a couple of our, our sentences on this slide got a little bit jumbled. That top, that top sentence is a repeat from the previous slide, but here what it should say is that Invest DSM has succeeded in unleashing homeowner investment in Franklin and Drake. And, and so the recommendation was to expand the Drake Special Investment District for bigger impact. We did that late last year and so last fall, we took it from 35th had been our Western Boundary Street and we took it all the way over to 42nd. We're still saying, staying south between University and 235. And then also to begin preparations for transition out of the Franklin Special Investment District. Now that is not happening tomorrow, but we are starting to look at what our metrics are so that we can say within the next two to three years, we've done enough here, it's time for us to move on to another place. So in Drake, one of the things that CZB noted was that this was a really good choice for us as an organization. We are able to, with some of our development work, clear some hurdles that are impossible for any other actor. There are a number of homes in the Drake neighborhood that have been experienced disinvestment over decades because they're early 1900s housing stock, they need new everything. And so we are able to take those down to the studs, replace all the major systems in them, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, and bring them back as more energy efficient and more valuable homes, really kind of bring them back to where they should be. In Franklin, one of the things that they noted is that we've had a sizable core group of homeowners that have had the capacity to invest in their homes, have really taken advantage of the grant programs available to them. And so it's made out of very low risk area for Invest DSM. We open up a grant program, people take advantage of it, investment follows, conditions improve and the cycle goes in the direction that we want it to go. And we'll get to some data here in a minute where you can see that happen. And so the recommendation there was as the market continues to strengthen, that we plan for that transition to bring our resources to bear in other places. So this is a chart that shows our homeowner investment since 2020. So we have two grant programs that mainly serve homeowners. One is a homeowner renovation program and so you need to be an owner occupant to utilize that one. And the other one is our version of the Block Challenge Grant. And so you can see the differences that we've had in the number of projects across our four special investment districts over the past couple of years. The darker blue is what Invest DSM has put into, has granted through those programs and then the green is what the owner investment has been as a result of participating in those grant programs. And so what we're seeing is Drake and Franklin have had a faster uptake, just higher participation in those programs so far. They didn't need anybody to convince them that it was a good thing, they, they saw it and took advantage of it. And then also we are seeing homeowners put in higher dollars compared to the ones that we are putting in. They have a little bit more financial capacity. And so, you know, each, each area has its own version of success. We are not trying to compare the success of one to another necessarily, but as we look to the future and to what areas we want to take on next, this was informative to us and to our Board of Directors on, you know, where can we go where we can get the best return on Invest DSM's dollars?
Just as a context piece, there's a lot more to Invest DSM than just the homeowner investment portion.
Absolutely.
And those dollars aren't reflected.
Correct. Yes, this is just homeowner investment and, you know, as we add on all of the other things that we do, we get a fairly, things even out actually fairly well in terms of the investment going into each place. It's just in, in the Franklin neighborhood in particular, that area started out with a high level of homeownership and homeowners as actors in the area are really being the drivers behind the change. So one of the recommendations then coming out of that was as we look to the future, we knew we were looking to add additional special investment districts and really thinking about developing more of a quick win approach and keeping in mind the characteristics of a place like Franklin where we maybe have the opportunity to bring grant programs in and then exit within more of a six to eight year period as opposed to a 10-year period. So looking at new special investment district locations that have characteristics that are more like Franklin as that kind of rapid success model that we can click through and then have the opportunity to get around to more geographies over time. So that was one recommendation that CZB had. The other one was really more of a note that our softer demand, even in the middle market category, our softer demand neighborhoods have slightly different problems to solve and so the toolkit needs to look just a little bit different. We have more substantial funding gaps in those places and so, you know, for an example, if Invest DSM purchases a property to rehab and sell it, we are putting deeper subsidy into a property in Columbus Park than we are in, to one in Drake, because Drake can sell at a higher price point per square foot than the one in Columbus Park. We're starting to see those things even out as well. Again, each place is on its own trajectory. We're not looking for them to all be the same in the end, but it just speaks to a little bit of the difference that we have to have in our approach to each type of place. And I would say that we, we suspected that this would be the case going in. We knew that each of the four areas was going to perform differently, they had different characteristics and so really it's all playing out as we anticipated that it would. This was also at the time, we had about three years of data, we'd only been working in the areas for about three years and so it's still really early days. We still have a long ways to go here. Okay, so I'm going to switch gears a little bit and leave CZB's status report and go into our annual update. I'll try and skip through quickly just for sake of time, but we can come back around to questions if you have them. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about both what we did in 2023 from a numbers standpoint and then also our impact to date since 2020 if we combine all the, the previous years together. Okay, so for 2023, we did a lot of things in 2023. It was a big year for us. So just some of the highlights, we completed a strategic plan that'll take us through 2025. You know, we're still a young nonprofit organization and so we went through a variety of operational updates, revamped our website, did some other things. We've gone through our third audit cycle now with no, no findings. We programmatically, we expanded the boundaries of both our Drake and Franklin Special Investment Districts. We assembled the redevelopment site at the corner of Sixth and Euclid and we put out an RFP and we've now selected a development team that'll be announced later this month. We fully completed 158 projects through our five grant programs and those completed projects represent $19.2 million of investment across our four special investment districts. We also signed 254 new grants and so some of those completed last year and some of those will be 2024 projects. We sold five homes that we had purchased and rehabilitated. We also helped enable construction of five new homes in partnership with Neighborhood Finance Corporation and Home, Inc. Those are properties that Invest DSM acquired. In some cases, we demolished the structure that was there that was in poor condition and then we got the lots to NFC and Home, Inc. to build on. We also finished our second year of partnering with Art Week to bring people into the special investment districts for Art Week celebrations. And then we've been working with city staff over the past six months or so to identify two new special investment districts, which we'll get to at the end of the presentation. This just gives you a snapshot of our five grant programs. So the orange shaded columns are the completed projects and so those are the 158 projects that, that finished in 2023 and the $19.2 million of investment that I talked about there. We were about 2.1, 2.2 million of that and then the other 17 was leveraged from private funds and other sources. There was, we did have a large commercial project in the mix there. Invest DSM put some funding into Wesley Life's New Meals on Wheels Campus on University and so that was a big, I think it was an $11 million project that's in our commercial numbers there. We were only about 100,000 of that large project. But the other point that I wanted to make with this slide is that even though we only had 158 completed projects, we've got about 600 to 700 projects that are flowing through our doors every year. And so some of those are still in the application stage, some of them are under construction and they will complete either later this year or even early 2025, but we, we count them in the year that they get fully completed.
Question, single family developer costs?
Mm-hmm.
In terms of, are we, or do you take out sort of the dollars that come back? In terms of, are we, or do you take out sort of the dollars that come back when the project is sold? Or how is that?
No.
That's just the dollars that Invest E S M has?
Yes, yes, yes. So sale, that calculation is not reflected here. Okay. These were our five rehab sales last year. So we had two in the Drake neighborhood, one in Columbus Park and two in Oak Park. Just on these five properties. So some of them sold too recently. The assessed values haven't actually been updated yet. So when we looked at the market value, the way we defined that for this purpose was the difference between what we bought it for and what we were able to sell it for in the end. And so that increase in market value was just over $1 million across these five properties. And that will start to improve the assessed values as we get into next year's cycle.
But the 167% is?
The average increase per property.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, several of these were empty. And so the one in the top right corner was a, we got on sheriff's sale. It had been foreclosed upon it, it had been boarded for a number of years. The one in the bottom left corner, that one was in Oak Park. It had been tied up with some really messy IRS liens. And so that one had been vacant for a number of years as well. And then we were also able to make just, you know, some marketable updates, marketability updates, reconfiguring floor plans, you know, upgrading kitchens and baths, that sort of thing. We're really with our development, trying to lead the market to where we want it to go. And I've got some slides later that'll show how that's starting to happen. Okay, so now this is impact from our five grant programs since 2020. So this is the last four years, all projects together. We've completed about 950 projects. That's been a total investment across the four special investment districts of over $44.2 million, which I think is pretty significant in four years. Again, we've been 8 million of that and then have leveraged the rest from either property owner investments or other sources. So we're feeling pretty good about that. When you look at the project mix, and this is, this has been pretty consistent year over year, about 94, 95% of the projects that we complete every year are with homeowners that are already in these neighborhoods. So that's the vast majority of the work that we do. Everything else is a much smaller percentage. However, dollar wise, those single family developer projects, the commercial projects are usually much higher dollar amounts. And so in terms of the dollars that we've granted, about 64% of those dollars have gone to existing homeowners and the remainder have gone to either single family development projects, commercial projects, or, you know, small business owners redoing their space. This is back to our development work again. So since 2020, we have completed and sold 10 rehab projects. We've had about 5 million in total costs. That includes the acquisition at about 1.2. And then we've brought almost $3 million in sale proceeds back to Invest E S M to recycle for other projects. Again, we've had, there's always a lag in things to catch up for assessed value. So we've got some estimates in there, but we've increased the market value of those 10 properties by about 1.72 million or about 150% on average. And the assessed value by about 1.3 million at the time that I was pulling this information. We've also, in the last year, started to have some new construction work flowing. So I mentioned the four that we've completed. There's actually nine at this point, but I don't have numbers back for all of them. So I stuck with the four where I had all the information. The first four new homes that were built and sold, these were properties that, again, either had a structure on them that was in very poor condition and needed to be replaced. In that case, Invest E S M purchased the property. We cleared the lot and got it ready for new construction. And then for these four, they were all, N F C came in and built four new homes on them. And so you can see how some of the values have changed there. We had one where it was a lot, one, a single lot that we split into two lots and were able to build two new homes on it. All this to say that the development work is starting to, again, kind of lead the market. With only about half a dozen projects a year, we are not completely changing the market. Not all sales are as high as the ones that we are seeing. But what we're seeing on a price per square foot basis is that the sales of our development projects are starting to be more in line with the average price per square foot at the citywide level and at the county level, which ultimately is what we're aiming for is to be kind of within those two parameters. We want the houses in these special investment districts to be competitive at a regional level. And so the way that we can look at that is on a price per square foot basis. And so that's what we're starting to see here. Okay. Switching gears yet again to our last topic of the morning is new special investment districts. So where do we go from here? We have worked with city staff over the last six or so months to take all of this data and information that we pulled together for C D B's status report, to do a lot of driving around the city, talking with our ward council members. Thank you for all of those conversations, talking with neighborhood leaders, going back to some of the overarching principles for this middle market revitalization strategy, you know, really focusing around where we have existing strengths in the community, building off of those, where do we have major assets that we need to protect? And looking at driving tax based growth and stability so that our valuations as part of that tax equation are a little bit stronger so that we can bring our rate down over time. So we looked at a variety of data, property conditions, city block, citywide block challenge participation, where are people coming out and making improvements to their homes already? Demographics, where do people have the financial capacity to participate in our programs? Since everything that we do is a cost share with the property owner. And then we had some city data on, you know, rentals and blitz on blight properties, things like that. And so bringing all of that together, we have identified, we first identified probably over a dozen areas that were candidates across the city where we could focus next. And we've narrowed that down. And in March, our Board approved two new special investment districts for us to start working in this year. And so the first of those will be a combination of the north of Grand and Woodland Heights neighborhoods. So we're really looking at M L K Parkway on the east, over to 42nd on the west, 235 on the north, down to Ingersoll on the south. So that's about 1,400 parcels that we're looking at taking on. This would be one special investment district. What we've seen is with all the momentum around Ingersoll recently, that commercial corridor is really becoming an asset that the city can be proud of. And so we want to make sure that the housing stock around it remains strong so that we can protect all of that. When we looked at this area, I think I was actually fairly surprised that 62% of the homes are in pretty average condition, which in my mind gives us a big opportunity to be that confidence building mechanism that we were created to be and to help homeowners take their capital off the sidelines and really invest them in upgrading these older homes. It's early 1900s housing stock again, and so we know that there are lots of major system improvements that are needed. Those upgrades are costly. And so what happens is homeowners just don't do them if they don't have to, or they don't do them fully because they don't want to pull the permit that triggers a whole bunch of other work. What we've seen is that our grant programs enable people to get it done to the full extent that they need to and to really upgrade that property so that it will be sustainable for the next 50 years. The second one then is a section of the Union Park neighborhood. Union Park is quite a large neighborhood, and so we aren't able to take in the entirety of its boundaries. But we want to start by focusing in kind of a U shape directly around Union Park itself. There's a lot of investment planned in Birdland Marina. Union Park, of course, is a well loved park as an asset. And the housing stock here has some similarities to the housing that we work with in Drake. And so we see that as a big opportunity to kind of take those values and get them where they actually should be so that homeowners are building equity over time. One thing to note here, we did use the citywide block challenge data. Where have people participated? And there hadn't been any participation over here. But in our conversations with their neighborhood leaders, their neighborhood association focuses a lot on social events. They do quite a few through the year where they have several hundred people come out. And so they said to us, quite honestly, we haven't focused on it yet. And so they were very excited about working with us to start encouraging their neighbors to invest in their homes. So Union Park would be the second one.
And Amber, I asked you this, but we are going to pick up those, make those homes eligible to the west of Pennsylvania, but still bordered by Washington.
Yes, yes, yes. And that this map, we just followed the street center lines.
Four houses, right?
Yes, yes. Typically, we, Invest E S M takes care of both sides of our boundary streets. Just for the sake of drawing a map, it's much easier to go down the street center line. So yes. So here's what our anticipated timeline looks like. There is an action on the council agenda tonight, really to ratify and support Invest E S M's selection of these two new special investment districts. We are partners in this endeavor and we do need help from city staff to work through that planning phase. And so what would happen next is we would start assembling steering committees from each of these areas. We are working on a new planning contract with C Z B. And in conjunction with city staff, we would start the plan development phase later this spring or early summer. Take that through the end of this year, and then we would be working through plan approvals in early 2025. And then Invest E S M would open our grant programs to those new areas once we've figured out what those look like and what the goals are in each place. And so our grant programs would begin to be available to start implementation about a year from now. All right. That's it for me. Do you have any additional questions for either myself or Anu?
Not necessarily quite, well, maybe a question and a comment. But Amber, I appreciate the job you and your staff and our board members have done with this. Obviously, when we started this, it was, we're going to target possibly the four wards and get that district set out for the four wards. So money is flowing into all of us ward members. Through the redistricting, I don't represent Columbus Park anymore.
Right.
And so I have zero dollars from Invest E S M going into my district right at the moment. So I'm hoping, and I know there was potential that we could have picked a couple other ones, and I'm supportive of this, but I hope we don't look at it 10 years down the road. I hope that we can look at this hopefully in a year or two and hopefully add in some other things. And I'm looking at Connie and Mike, and Carl's not here, and I'll have the conversations with them going forward and also with the Board of Supervisors and other folks. But just a little disappointed in that, that, you know, it's my job to, to fight for the folks in my district. And we have zero dollars. And I understand that, I see how we've done it, but I'm hoping that we look at that sooner than later.
We have a commitment as a board too to continue to look at it because we do know there's some other areas. Unfortunately, the boundaries all changed.
I understand.
For the ward people. But again, it's really, this is to maximize the dollars we're investing. And I know there's other areas, there's a lot of areas that, there's a couple that have strong participation in block challenge that would be good. So we're, we definitely have some that we continually revisit it every year as to what we can do to improve. But I think again, too, this is that mid-market, so we have to understand, you know, on how do we improve the stock? And I think it's reflective of having the wherewithal. And we did develop different mechanisms within the two where we had slower participation on making it a better incentive, knowing they didn't have the wherewithal to put in. So just really building the program from scratch and trying to see how it works. And that's why I think the other mechanisms we have from the city, whether it be ION and some of those things, give great opportunity for the whole city to take part of. So it's not, we're not doing something for everyone. But the one question I have, and it's not necessarily Amber, but when we talk about affordable housing, what is the average home versus maybe our suburban? Because everybody's the attention, affordable, affordable. But what is, I'd say we have a lot of affordability. We just need to repair, which I think is what we're doing, and making our stock good. But I think we have to look at the relationship. But we do have a lot of affordability in Des Moines. We just need to make sure it's good, safe, affordable housing.
Yeah, I'd say we have less of a housing cost issue in Des Moines and more of a housing quality issue in Des Moines, just the age of the homes.
And I think we found too, the biggest thing is some of these areas, people were going to move, either move out of the neighborhood or move out of Des Moines, but they invested in their home because of Invest E S M, which kept them in the neighborhood, which is another component we don't talk about, is about strengthening our neighborhoods, is keeping the same people there. So I think being on that board has shown has been pretty impactful. But will we be looking at your area?
Thanks.
Other questions?
I'd, no, you asked us to vote on it tonight, and I'll support it. I, like most of the people that watch our meetings, don't understand the great board that Invest E S M has. And I trust them, and I think it's really impressive and appreciate the work that they do. I do, I do think there's big wins on the southeast side with Joe and, you know, maybe as, maybe there's a way that we can more formally say that within a couple of years at least Invest E S M Board can vote up or down on the best district out there. And if they voted down, they voted down. But, you know, at least ask for some action. I, I know the Franklin project is much in Ward One, and it's given great energy to those neighborhoods and really good. I do have one question, Amber. And I think over time, I've asked you this, and I think this is the, if you go back a couple of slides, I think this is the best, you know, I know that it's hard to get data Right there. I appreciate this, and I think it's very impressive. And, you know, for the increase in, in square foot valuation is huge for us. What I don't see there, just in comparison, is, so in the special investment district, we know what the, how it grew from 2017 to 2021. But we don't have that for Des Moines and Polk County to kind of compare.
Sure.
How is the investment districts differed from the, the overall? And that, that's just something that I've been interested in. And I know you and I have talked about this before. The compelling thing about Charles and his recommendations to us is that the real win for the city isn't even necessarily the house that we invest in. It's the two or three houses on both sides of it. And that's, that's where we can test that strategy. I think if we have baselines for the, you know, the overall, the overall area compared to the special investment districts. And that's one of the things I'd like to see is just that growth, you know, they're all crazy impressive. And I have no idea what the citywide or countywide will show, but I would be interested in kind of an apples to apples.
Sure.
How they, how they change.
Yep. Yeah, I have that data, so we can get that to you as a follow up.
You provided me a couple color coded maps of individual for, I ended up giving that to a neighborhood group that wanted to go through and target some of those for ION.
Okay.
Can I get a couple more of them?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yes.
Where are the parcels?
Yes, yeah, there was a.
There will be a small fee.
Yeah, thanks.
I think that's one thing by even researching it, again, it helps identify for the ION program where we can really invest some dollars to help people out because a lot of people still don't know about that.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Well, and I look at that as building a foundation for future.
Right.
Future work.
And this neighborhood wanted to go through and, you know, kind of really try to implement the ION program to some of those.
That's great.
Really kind of deteriorating their neighborhood and their group, their association. So I was happy to give it to them.
Absolutely.
I don't know how he was able to do that, going through that tiny little map, but he said he'll be able to do it.
I'll work on a new set.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Anything else?
Anything else? If not, we move on to another exciting topic of taxes.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. And this is to explain the form that we got?
As best can be done.
Thank you for the letter that tried to explain it.
Trying to do my best, I'm not. Good morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Nick Shaw, Finance Director here at the city. As I'm going to try and talk this morning on is the form that, that did go out. I do believe that there is some pros and cons to, to what, that went out. As somebody that has tried to get more and more outreach and discussion since we've been, since I've been here too, that this at least gets it in, in the eyes and the hands of, of our property owners. The things that I do want to point out is this does give us the three main taxing entities on every property. So as we kind of look at all the different taxing entities that a property owner does pay property taxes on, the three that do make up the biggest percentages is going to be the, the city school and, and the county. Okay? And so that's why they kind of broke it out with those on the front sheet. The nice thing about this too, is it did give the information out to all of the public hearings for this, for this notice as well. So this did talk about how the school had theirs on March 26th. One was at 9:30 in the morning and one was at 5:30. The school was at 5:30 at night and the county was in the morning then. And then ours, which was just a bit earlier today. One thing I do want to kind of point out as something that's on this, the notice that we actually put together actually had a lot more information. This is condensed for the notice. So you guys would have approved the more detailed information of what makes up the rates for us. What makes up that 1661 and, and what are different components of that? Cause you have our general levy as well as our employee benefits, our, our tort liabilities, and then our debt service. So all those different components make up our 1661. And that kind of, that notice that you guys had approved kind of had all that detail. So those other entities would have had that same type of information. So it is available from all of the different sites to be able to, different taxing entities to be able to, to give that type of level of detail. From this, I do want to point out some things that, that kind of get confusing for, from what we've heard from the calls and emails and questions that we've received. One of the things I want to point out is what that effective tax rate is. What that actually is, is, is a, a calculation that is required within this. That's basically if no additional property taxes were levied, if it was exactly the same property taxes as the current fiscal year we're in, what would that rate have to look like? So all that is, is a calculation of, given the new values that all of the taxing entities see, what does that look like for, for a rate? So that's kind of what that effective rate is. It's a little misleading, a little bit hard to understand that nowhere, the, I, I, I know that from, from the city standpoint, that's not something that we would normally look at because we're looking at it from a standpoint of where, where, where we were in a prior year for our, our taxes and where we need to be able to cover those costs increase that we've seen and other revenues that we might be able to utilize. So.
Cause I, I'm, I'm not understanding what, explain that.
Use the numbers. Sure. So for Des Moines.
Yeah, the affected rate. Cause that was my confusion also with that.
So what, what, but what basically stands for is that current property taxes, that 147, oh, five, eight, four, four, five is the amount of property taxes that the, that was generated in this current fiscal year that we're in. So.
At 1661.
At 1661.
Right, gotcha.
That's this number?
Yep.
That's the rate that would have generated given, uh, given our current property values.
Yep.
Okay. And then basically with the new growth that we have, which was at 4%, means our rate, if we were asking for no additional dollars, if we were asking for the exact same dollars of 147, oh, oh, five, eight, four, four, five, this is the rate that would have, that would generate that same exact dollar. Yep.
Okay.
Which basically implies that you have no increase in costs or no other, you know, revenue to kind of.
But that doesn't take into account that what we got cut because we had 4% and went down to two.
Yep. And the one thing that, yeah, for, Des Moines is a, a unique also with our fiscal year 2024. What we had happen with rollback in 2024, different things like that. We actually had a property tax decrease in our total value in 2024. So we actually had our tax, if we look at our current, if we would have this a year prior, you would have actually seen the current property taxes as a larger number than the proposed property taxes dollars. So, so what we've been trying to do is trying to, on average, our growth has been that three, 3.3% of what we have for growth for, for our taxes. So we try to, to live kind of within that, that realm of 3% growth.
Yeah. So our, my previous comment, when we had our speaker here, it would be nice if the legislation possibly cap it at 3% instead of going below the, the 3%. If you, if you have 4% growth, then you actually go below the 3%.
Yeah. That, that legislation that you're referring to, it did create some, some unique cliffs for individuals, individual prop municipalities that if they were over 3%, there was a 2% decrease. So if you were at 3.1% growth, you actually went down to 1.1 growth, which was, I'm sure, very difficult for, for some cities out there.
Yeah, that didn't make much sense.
But if you're at like 12%, you went down to nine.
Correct. And then if you were over six, if you were over, if you were over six, you would trim three. Yep.
So wouldn't it be more fair if that's all they want is 3% growth to hold everybody at 3%?
I mean, that, that's, I mean.
I mean, if that's.
To our speaker's point of view, that was my point of saying, if we're all going to go together and, and work on, working on, you know, a legislative change, a 3% cap would be, would be nice for us to be able to fulfill our commitment to keep our, our levy rate to where it is. Because if we continue to do this and we slip below the 3% each and every year, then our levy rate will have to increase eventually because we won't be able to pay our bills. So they defeated the purpose of what they're trying to do by doing that.
So one thing that, for example, of our, our, our growth from, from, from year to year, since we average about 3%. Ours would go from reassessment year to non-reassessment year, where we might see in the past 10 years, our best was like a 7%. But our worst was basically zero or negative. So we vary in, in, on, on, on our examples. So.
Right. In the bottom line, we need the good years to balance out.
Yes.
The not good years. And what this is doing is taking away the possibility to have those good years.
Correct.
To balance out, which.
Yeah. So we would always look at a lot of our budget decisions at the city in terms of, of kind of a two-year window. So basically when we were making decisions on, on staffing and, and providing services, we would look at our expenses and go, is that something that we want to? Knowing that it was either a reassessment year or a non-reassessment year, we would have to look at, is that worth doing that this year or the following year, knowing what most likely the, the growth percentages might be. And now that's kind of, since it's such a drastic change to that approach, that's one where we're going to have to be looking at the budgets a lot more often publicly so that we can actually get a lot more input and have those discussions with council. The one other thing I want to kind of highlight at the top of this, at the top of the, the sheet as well, is what, what's called a taxing district. Okay? And this will get a little technical, hopefully won't be too bad. But the city of Des Moines is made up of a lot of different taxing districts throughout the entire city. So it's hard to be able to speak to each individual property owner because they would be in a completely different taxing district than, than another. One thing that I, that I am going to try to, to, to talk out to Mr. Warnock about is it, the, the tool that you were talking about on being able to put in very specific information. Because yes, we, this went out to every property owner, but with multiple taxing districts, the forms did not look the same.
So example would be like in Des Moines where we have all the different school districts. So if you're living in Brook Run and you have Southeast Polk School Tax, it's different than Des Moines. So, but you're in Des Moines, so you got the Des Moines rate?
City and Polk County, but a different school.
Yeah, different school.
Every taxing district, every property within the same taxing district is subject to the same taxing authorities. And so if you go across the street and the county changes or a school district changes, they have to create a new taxing district.
Oh, okay.
So.
Same with smids, same with urban renewal areas as well, because they'll have one taxing district that, that they have the base on as well as the increment and, and a lot of different components there that comes into play.
Can you, can you scroll up a little bit so I can see what Polk County's?
So, so kind of going into that, so it's a little bit, it's very difficult to kind of, a one response fits all to a lot of these questions. That's why it's usually good to have a lot of conversations or, or that discussion with individual owners just so that it can make a lot more sense. The one thing I do like is the fact that it does talk about, because I'm comparing it to some of the things that we've had in the past. This basically replaced what, what was the max property tax dollars that we had in, in the last, I want to say three fiscal years prior. That was kind of very misleading, I thought as well, because that only talked about our operating levies and not the debt service levy, where this is all levies in combination. So that did make some positive steps in, in that regard. I'm going to go to the second page on this form. And again, it does reference the taxing district again at the top. So you can see that this particular letter was City of Des Moines, Des Moines School District. And so this does show the breakout. What it's actually doing in this top table is taking all properties within that taxing district and lumping them together. So you're actually seeing all of the property tax collected from that particular taxing district. So things that can kind of throw that off is, let's say you happen to be in a, in a district that it has TIF. Just because your property is in that, that, that TIF area does not mean we're collecting TIF off of your particular property. It's just that TIF was being collected within that, that taxing district. So that usually throws off the percentage. So I didn't want to add that complexity to this, but those that did have to tax rates on there, it usually throws that percent of authority in a weird situation where it looks like the city is taking 90% of their, their, that authority. But it's kind of a, a different scenario there. And then the other part that I think that is probably most misleading, and there was references earlier this morning, is the implied percentage change that, that they have with these residential and commercial properties. The problem that we're seeing here is, one, it's the exact same information. So it's kind of confusing, I think, to individuals. Because commercial properties up to 150,000 are taxed as if they are residential. That's why a $100,000 property, both residential, commercial are taxed exactly the same. The other part of it too, that's in, that, that's confusing here is because the rollback that was referenced earlier is, plays a, a, a big factor in what's causing this problem of, of this comparison. So what you're doing is you're seeing a current tax rate and the proposed tax rate, and they're looking at $100,000 home. The problem that you're seeing is it's just basically giving you that $100,000 in one year versus the other. There's not a change in that value. And so most often on reassessment year, based off of market rate, uh, market conditions, the county has to be within 95 and 105 of market, market, market values for assessed values. So what this is doing is comparing 100,000 versus 100,000. The problem is, is that's the assessed value. Then you have to go down to the rollback. Well, what's not being shown here is the rollback in the current fiscal year is 54.65%. So that basically means that your property is being taxed, only 54.6% of it is actually being taxed. So a $100,000 home is only being taxed on 56,000 of it. In the proposed tax rate, because there was a large growth in value, in market values in Iowa that had to, uh, do go through that reassessment year, the rollback, because that limits growth statewide by 3%. And so what that rollback ended up doing is it decreased, the residential rollback went down to 46%. And so that 46% means now your $100,000 home would only have $46,000 of taxable value. And so that's why it looks like all of these are a negative property taxes just because of the change in rollback. And that made it very, very confusing, I think, for, for everybody to read this and, and try to explain it. So there is work to be done, I think, to try and get these to an area that I think will be more beneficial. But in essence, it is a, a good thing, I think, to have the property owners understand the three major components of their tax rate and when they have these public hearings. So. Any questions?
Any questions from anyone on this?
A reminder that Nick sent out that email. It's very helpful that it can be just forwarded to individuals because it also has contact information.
Yep. I did draft one of those email for you guys to be able to send out if, if you guys get questions. If, and it does have my, my contact information as well as Joe Branstad, or the deputy, uh, one of my deputy finance directors.
These smaller levies that we have are not, are not identified here. And you've mentioned a couple of times, the three major ones. Are they not because the legislation has a threshold or we, we chose not to, or the county chose not to?
That was what was done in the state legislature. It was these three components that had to do these new, uh, new requirements. So it wasn't that, I think, I think at the legislation level, they realized that these are the three major components. So they didn't go into the other one because some municipalities have the, like, let's say they have the transit within their city levy or their aviation authority within theirs as well. So there is, it, it's, it's very hard to compare them.
Is it the only three major?
Yes. Without, without this, uh, without this notice being that much larger, it would be very hard to do that. So the ones that we have, obviously we have DART, which is that. So the ones that we have, obviously we have DART, which is that separate authority that we have, but also we've got Broad Lons, and there's.
DMAC, too, right?
DMAC.
DMAC, Ag Extension.
And Ag Extension, and, yep.
Yep.
And the state has their three cents on all, on all properties as well.
Well, if there's no other.
Yeah.
Questions, I guess that we will conclude this work session, and thank you for the time and attention to this issue, and if anyone has any questions, we know where to direct them.
What time tonight? Do we have a?
4:45.
Nice.
And then we have a closed session after the meeting.
Pardon me?
We have a closed session after the meeting.
Okay.
So with that, we will reconvene at 4:45 for our regular city council meeting. Thank you all for being here and giving us good information.